All right. Pumpkin, call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, start with political.
Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Keel is on by phone.
All right.
Can you hear my name?
Pick.
Keel.
You may need to, is it up as far as it can go?
Yeah, I'm gonna do this so you can hear it from up there a little bit too.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. All right, do we have motion to approve the agenda or any additions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion? In the keel by conference, we will, we'll call all these votes, we'll start by him.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
And Randall.
Yes.
All right, do we have motion to approve minutes from nine fifteen? So move.
Second.
Discussion? Randall.
Yes.
O'Hara. Brennan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
And Keel.
Yes.
All right. And for bills somewhere for payment if any. Take a minute for any public input on any non-ident items. Kelly?
Did you need my name and address? I can't remember your protocol.
I know.
Okay though, Kelly Tushen. So I'm actually here on behalf of Downtown Hartford Inc., in particular the farmer's market. We had our last market last Thursday and so on behalf of DHI and Farmer's Market Committee, I wanted to express our gratitude and appreciation to the council and to the city staff that helped to support and allow our market season to happen. It was quite successful, I would say, and so I just really wanted to express my appreciation to all of you for allowing that to happen. And if there were any concerns or comments that maybe you've heard that I should be aware of in terms of my planning for next season, I'm just curious.
No, I don't think so. With that, it's.
I heard a little rumor you were thinking about two a month. Oh, that's two are too soon? I'll retract.
We'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to discuss if that's a viable option with any of the vendors first before I ask for permission for, for that, but the thought was in my mind, yes, or.
Yes, I only bring that up because I think it's a good idea too, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you.
And.
Amen. Downtown Hartford and everybody who puts that down, thank you. That's a good one. All right, any other public comments? All right, then we'll move to the special event application. We got Witches and Relax Wine Mart.
This is Evans and for the Downtown Hartford Inc., we'd like to do the Witches and Relax Wine Mart again, like we did last year. We're just looking for approval on the event and to answer any questions that you have on it. And.
And.
To also ask if any of you would help out again, we would love to have you there to volunteer via presence at the event. It went really well last year. We did really like having you there, being a part of it.
Remind me the date.
October seventeen, so not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And you would like us to be there.
Nope, I won't be around here, but.
Okay. Uh.
You would like us to be there participating.
So what the city council did last year was they helped with, uh, with our one game that we had going on. This year we have two games. We have got the cornhole and then pumpkin bowling, which we did last year, which was super fun, like that was five dollars for three throws. It did really well and so this year we're gonna add cornhole to it and make it just like a whole thing downtown, so, yeah. And then we schedule it, so we schedule, you have a time slot, so nobody has to do it the entire evening and then you can rotate out and then go and enjoy the evening around.
Yeah, well, I would volunteer.
That would be great, that would be great. So I can send out an email to you guys as well and then, um, put you in text box if you want or let you volunteer for whichever ones you would take.
That's great, yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the event?
I'll make a motion to approve the event. It looks like we're blocking off the main street, right?
Yeah, so the same section as last year, so going, um, we went out to, uh, I think on First Street, then, um, we went out a little ways behind the brewery and the elevator kind of in between there by the alley and some here blocked out to about there. And then going up Main, a little ways, and then down in front of the South Bar. And then I talked to Craig on garbage cans and, um, road closure signs for it as well.
All right, I'll still make a motion that we approve the event. And we, the fee, did they ask or did?
Nope, they can have, they paid for it.
How, they paid for it? Okay, then we're gonna have to pay for it.
They can all prepare five dollars.
Oh, they wanna stay out. Man, I'm a little slow, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow, I'm sorry.
You gotta get costumed up, Arden.
I gotta do something. Did anybody say that? I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion?
Is there, 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 is[522.84]
Back they they had these.
I don't. No, I'm just.
Uh, power goes up that way.
Hmm, there's gotta be electricity runs up through there some.
In that, in that.
That's on the inside of the sidewalk.
Inside of the sidewalk, not on the.
I say utility even if um here's.
Not on the, not on the street side.
Right.
Um, I understand that this is not the only property that may have this.
No, there's at least three of them right now that.
That are gonna have this.
That's the next question.
Well, I, I, I got a sidewalk going in right now on Main two. They came in just today for permit and they wanna put one in. I said, well, we're gonna talk about it tonight and if council, you know, if we're gonna treat it just like any other sidewalk and allow them then.
Does it need to be cut down so you can walk up, you know, like what at the corner sidewalk, they approach up top? Or can it just be right to the curb?
A drop in the curb?
Yeah.
Most, most times you don't put a drop in the curb. It's just a step up there and the curb stays.
The sidewalk wouldn't be wheelchair accessible.
Yeah, it's not a wheelchair ea- accessible item.
Alright.
It's just a, a lot of times, a lot of times you see.
You put a drop, does it have to be then?
No.
If you put a drop, would you have to make it ADA and put that earlier?
Maybe, and you know, most time you see these on corner lots or lots where the, the garage is in the back of the alley or something. And so they've got a house and all that faces the street, so it's just a way to get off to the curb without having to walk across the grass because there's no driveway. Most people wouldn't use the driveway that came up that side. So a lot of times we see them on corner lots and.
Are you intending Scott to flare like you did coming down from the house? You got a flare coming up from the street? So it kinda matches or?
Yeah, I think so. Or at least I'd like to have that option. I looked at that too.
Right.
Comes down and flares just a little bit and then to make it match on.
Right.
At least on the, on the house side of that boulevard, maybe not out by the curb, but at least on the house side.
Yeah, right. I don't know if you need to at the curb, but that was for, when I looked at the pictures, that's what I noticed. It'd be nice if it, you know, at least it would be a thing.
And it would be like five foot line. Just to keep the sidewalk in proportion with everything else that's up there.
Seen, it's a pretty common niche in the area.
Yeah, the, in older parts of town too, especially you seen where there was, again, a lot of alleys that where the garage is in the back. So your front doorway that they usually have, a lot of times they have a sidewalk.
We do have some around town.
Sure.
And I, I get the layout, especially in the older part of towns where.
Right around in Sioux Falls, there's a lot of them.
Well.
Newer part where the, oh, or the alley, the driveways on different sides of the front door.
Do we need to make any notation in any of our ordinances or anything to allow this or are we okay just saying yes?
We, we talked, we talked about that. We thought, we figured that would be the next question.
Should we add an ordinance, which we certainly can, but I, I guess for tonight, I just wanna go, the consensus, are we okay with allowing carriage walks? And then if we are, then we'll throw it into the ordinance.
I, I, but who's responsible for?
Well, and to me, I could put in my report, I think, you know, to me, it'd be just like any other boulevard sidewalk, it should be the property owners that should be responsible for it if they're placing it in there. You know, just, just like they're responsible for maintaining the, you know, boulevard sidewalk, scooping it and you make sure it's free of ice and um, you know, if it gets cracked or, you know, needs repair, that falls back on the joint property owner. So just as long as, yeah, they know that, I think.
Who would be responsible for it if it does break the curb or in the event it heaves? And the city guys are pushing snow back on it and the blade catches it and rearranges it. Cause I suspect. I suspect Scott would say that it's the city's damaging his sidewalk. You know what I mean? If, if that thing heaved, if that heaved an inch or two and they're pushing snow back on the boulevard with the, with a blader, a wing and it catches that sidewalk.
Sure.
It's gonna move that sidewalk.
That's what kinda the public works guys were saying that, you know, if they put them in, if they put those expanders in, so it doesn't.
Well, best case scenario, you don't blow the curb out, but kind of it could heave too.
Right.
You know, it could, it could heave up.
Yeah, it can heave up.
You know, and I don't know, I don't know how often Craig and the guys ever put a, put a wing over a curb, but I know they, I know they get in it with a skid loader.
Right, we gotta nail box, you know, there's nail boxes that are on the curb and.
Yeah.
They avoid all of that. I.
I think those too.
I'd say. And a lot of that is going on. I'd say we make it as an approval. On a per case basis until we have it written into our.
Yeah.
I agree. We should do.
Yeah.
Approved by the council or approved by Teresa?
It's the council.
Yeah, approved by the council.
Approved by the council till we get something that then down.
We approve something that doesn't have an ordinance, so really, I mean. I'm gonna be the devil's advocate. He's being courteous by coming to us.
Yep.
But there's, you can't tell him yes or no.
Yeah, no, like you gotta have a flat work permit.
That's true.
So you gotta have a flat work permit, so somebody's gotta come to Teresa.
And he has put something on city property, so.
Yeah, but there's nothing telling her that it can't be done.
There was nothing telling me.
That it can.
But.
Right.
Like I said, the other thing why you have to come here is cause it is city property, so.
Yeah.
You know, if.
That's true.
And Scott, you plan on putting the expander in? Have you discussed that?
That would be a, sort of my contractor's responsibility, but from what I can tell, that's what they do anytime they butt up to the,
Something else.
Something they don't want it to move, they put in the expansion joint so that it isn't, it's gonna squish that expansion joint.
I just wanted to clarify that you, you guys had discussed it or had been discussed?
No, I like the idea of doing it so that it doesn't cause a problem in the future, you know?
Um, I think moving forward, it'd be mandatory, would it have expansion joints in it? Come home, so it's curb outside.
And I think too that, I think the home builder or the flat work concrete guy would appreciate some guidance on how these are constructed and are they permissible? Um, you know, you've got the flat work permit and I haven't read that ordinance. But in there, does it ask then to submit a, a flat work plan for the property? I know I would have benefited from having to submit a sidewalk or a, a plan for concrete.
Yeah.
And uh, so I think that perhaps that should be part of our building permit process in the future. And then, you know, you, I think the city has ordinances, there's a page on how to build a boil box?
We have a boil box policy, yeah. We got ordinances on everything. You can.
I don't know.
Realize.
This, the carriage walk is missing, so it's flag holes. But anyway, um, I think it should be included at some point in the future. So, so that people don't have to come here to the council, uh, takes up your time, takes up their time, whatever, and if it's, if it could be permitted along with everything else that goes with the building permit. And then it'll get inspected also, so.
So where we need to go forward?
You know, I don't think, the consensus, the council doesn't hurt, like everyone mentioned, there's nothing out there, but it is in, it is in the city right away there. It's in that whole bar area. So I think a motion would be best with direction to look at getting something out there for, in our flat work policy for future.
Okay.
But I can't make that motion.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make one motion, I guess. One motion, I'll make a motion to allow Public Works Superintendent, City Administrator to review and approve a carriage sidewalk.
Second.
Second.
You're saying, so we won't have to have them come to, come to council? These guys will just decide?
By the way, on their shoulders.
Nope.
Is there, my thought is, if he knew he wanted to do this and he's pouring on his other concrete, he could've done it all at once.
Right.
So if they're pouring concrete and, and they're ready, whatever, don't wanna have to wait. It beats having a meeting. I think it's better for the homeowner and the contractor, so. And. Just to play devil's advocate, so what are you gonna tell a resident that gets turned down for one when this gentleman gets approval? So then you put non-elected city personnel in the position of saying who gets it and who doesn't.
Correct.
Cause there's no recourse for a citizen concerning city staff. There's recourse against us. There's no recourse against them.
Right, that's why the next point of business, I think, is we, we address the new ordinance.
How long does it take to do an ordinance, Teresa? Two weeks, four weeks?
Uh, go through two readings, looks like an annual, so.
Two readings, so it'll be what, six weeks, month and a half?
And then the twenty day, it takes about a month and a half to do an ordinance. Really two readings for you and the twenty day?
With city staff making that exception meantime, we have reviewed one of these in the last four years. Some maybe have gone in.
Just to.
And earn that, but I'd say we've already spent too much time on it tonight because we've reviewed all of them, so.
There's only one here.
Very well.
Yeah.
But it sounds like there's more there.
There might be more than one minute.
Yeah.
Or they would've been here.
Yeah, they probably won't get it done this fall.
Yeah, he's got his sidewalk, can't he go to his.
Anybody need to hear the motion again?
Oh, hang on. Public Works and City Administrator?
Yes.
Or Public Works or City Administrator?
And.
Your motion was and.
Right.
Yeah.
They're the ones that inspect the sidewalk.
I just wanna clarify.
Can you read that again, Jeremy? Motion?
We can read it again. Is it Brown and Winter?
Why not?
Karen.
Yep.
Okay, um, motion was made to allow the Public Works Superintendent and the City Administrator to review and approve carriage sidewalk requests.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, the poll.
Brown.
Yeah.
John.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
Brandon?
Thanks.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Q.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Alright, next. Then Mr. Monahan is a visitor.
What? What's this? Oh, for that part. I thought I was under good business, I didn't know I was under visitor. Uh. Please take one and pass it down. I, uh, I own property at one oh three South Street and I would like to know what the council's thoughts on me purchasing city owned property behind my property at one oh three. Before I, before I do a fancy map and make a dollar proposal, I would like so, cause if, if there's no. Yeah, I mean, if there's no appetite for me to purchase all or a portion of that land, then that would be that. The only thing back there is a bunch of trees and a creek.
Is there?
You own right, you own right to that, those four trees then?
Yeah.
Yep.
Any future bike path plans in that general area? I'm trying to picture.
The master plan does have a path going from main to western, so I mean, we do wanna secure, keep some land back in there and obviously for creek maintenance too.
Yeah, we've always stopped the south side.
The south side.
The south side. It's just how we're being, you're.
Yeah, I like the word.
The, the bike trail wouldn't be feasible on the north side because you can see there's a drain achievement. There's an inlet on South Street that's literally just a very culvert that daylights right in the creek and it, in my mind, it wouldn't make any sense to put a bike trail cause you'd have to run the bike trail over the culvert.
Mm-hmm.
So. Yeah, if, if I seen any future use for a bike trail down there, I wouldn't bring it out, but it's always been my understanding that the bike trail would go on the south side of the property.
And is your interest all the way to, all the way to the creek? If you were interested?
I, I would be interested in buying it to the creek. I'd be interested in buying, um, one foot by a hundred foot. I'd be interested in buying a two foot by a hundred foot, four foot by a hundred foot, eight foot by a hundred foot. What, what would the appetite of the council be?
Sure.
And I, and I'd pay for the, I'd pay for whatever expenses were incurred to sit first to replant.
Yep.
Yep. You wanna try to stay out of the floodway or don't you back that?
I don't, I don't care about the floodway. I don't care about the flood plain. I don't care about the creek.
You don't care.
I don't care about it neither.
Runs up onto there, you don't care?
No.
Nope, cause they'll have two separate lots. You know, keep your building lots separate, you won't.
You make it into one.
You make it into one.
We're gonna make it into one.
That's my intention. Full disclosure, the reason I'm asking is not on this map, but on a different one. From the back of my garage to my property line is pitch two feet. So that means I can put in addition going south thirty-two feet. If I pick up two feet, I can go thirty-four feet.
Right.
Sure, cause, cause it, it will push my, it'll push my property lines out, which will push my twenty, my setback south.
Right.
So.
That's really what you're after.
Yeah.
You just need to get the setback pushed back as far as you can get, basically.
If I can buy, if I can buy X amount of feet from the city, then I can put up X amount of bigger building. Which right now that land is not generating any money for the city, but if I put up a bigger building, that will forever be taxed at a higher rate than a small building. So.
So my first blush at it, I'd say we wanna make sure enough back there for the city to do any, anything where you'd be able to do a creek and that, you know, there's ever a reason to get in there and clean out.
I, I thought about that too, that there, there's so much trees and underbrush. I think any creek cleaning would be done from the south. Because if there's a property east of me and there's a property west of me where all those trees are at. In any creek maintenance, I believe, you, you wouldn't even venture in there. You'd just do it from the south.
From the south side?
Yep, cause it, it would be far less labor intensive to do it from the south. Cause I believe on the south, you can just walk right up to the creek. So.
Tom, do you, do you see any issues or any potential issues?
Yes. Well, it'll depend on the manner in which it's sold, cause the, there's a statute that prohibits any governing board member from purchasing surplus property except at public auction.
Okay. So that's why I'm here.
Yeah, no idea.
So.
So, I mean, if, the city would, the, the process would be the city, you have to declare it surplus and then schedule an auction for the sale of property.
Jeremy?
Yes.
So would the property have to come in compliance, like not allow any parking on grass, but non-surface areas?
Well, I, I understand your comment, but I don't think it applies to what's being asked. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, that may, would that change when the property owner approaches to add on, add to beyond? At what point does the grandfather clause run out?
Which grand, what grandfather clause?
He's referring to where my. The property owner park on the lawn.
Are you asking if he builds a bigger building, if he'll have room for more of his stuff inside of it? Is that what you're asking?
Now, I'm asking if, uh, change the structure, use of the property, create a bigger structure on it. Then since the grandfather draw and clause that allows the person to park on the lawn, stay in a back, does that go away?
Tom.
Well, the, the way I'm understanding it, so right now, like gravel parking paths are grandfathered in if they were in place before hard surface ordinance went to fix. So like Mark's property has gravel on it and you can continue that as long as you keep it and maintain it, but you're not allowed to expand it. So if you're asking if he makes the building bigger, can he expand his, where he parks without hard surfacing, I would say no, wouldn't you?
I think that, yeah, usually a non-conforming use can't expand it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's just whatever it is now is grandfathered in and if you add anything new, it would have to comply. So what's there can still be grandfathered in, but any new parking surface would have to be hard surface or in compliance with our ordinance.
Is the only thing that takes away that, that grandfather clause, the change of owners of that, of the property that's on?
I think that a change of use would too, but he's not changing the use. He's still, I mean, he's just making a bigger building. He's, he's still using it in the same capacity that it was.
Did you catch all that, Q?
I did not.
Oh.
He's the kid. Um, basically what, uh, legal counsel, what Tom had mentioned is that any non-conforming use that is not, that does not get expanded just because a building gets expanded or anything like that. But changing a building or adding a building doesn't, doesn't take away the grandfather clause either. It's, it's, it doesn't apply, I guess.
The grandfather clause doesn't go into effect as a newly purchased property, there's just give more area for.
Correct.
More parking, correct?
Correct, yep, yep.
Unless you put a, approved hard surface.
Right, yeah, he'd have to comply with the ordinances now.
Yep. Yep.
So we can't accept, we can't sell it to them unless we auction it. We.
Right.
We declare it surplus, we advertise it rather than auction. Everybody comes and runs it up and.
Does, does it have to be auctioned or could be sold?
Wait, was that allowed?
Except for public auction, that's in the law.
If it's in the law, oh, gee. Special camp.
You guys. Yeah, counsel.
That's about it for you. Yeah.
Is he still selling?
Why is it better for me? Well, if at their point, if you went down and bought it, I suppose.
I just might even.
I gotta do this.
I can see that.
I guess he's standing top of right here.
Due to, uh, due to recent, uh, now that it came from town, because I do not want the city to incur the cost, cause the city would have to replant it at a cost. And then the city would, I assume, have to, I suppose you'd have to hire an auctioneer and I don't know how else to do it, so. So to save the city, the, the hardship of incurring those costs, I will temporarily withdraw my proposal. Cause maybe someday I won't be an elected official.
Yeah.
And we'll try again. Or maybe I'll find another way around.
Yeah, that's fair.
It was a good, it's a good discussion.
It's good to mark.
More than one way is giving cap.
Alright.
Mark, keep thinking.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Hey, you had handouts and stuff, that's, that's pretty nerve.
There's a, there's a, I actually have my own file down here.
Alright. Move to reports. Um, Debbie Paris couldn't be here tonight, so move on to. Dave. I'm gonna let you sit at the table and have, have a report.
No. Feel like you're thrown up there. Uh, thank you for having me here. Hope you are all having a good evening. Um, provided a copy of my report in the council packet. Um, so far, this last month, things have been going pretty well. We had a number of RFIs coming from GOED, uh, forums, the EXAC that I reviewed. Uh, some of them were not applicable to Hartford due to us not having written, and so we weren't able to apply for the majority of those. Um, I do wanna run your attention to the COVID relief grant program that the state is going to be releasing soon. I did, um, have a copy of that on your desk, um, before the meeting started. Uh, this is about to be approved by the legislature. They've approved it today by having that word of it, or they approved it hopefully tomorrow. But they did send us a copy of the guidelines for us to start communicating to various entities in the community. And so it's broken, the main relevant parts are broken into the four categories that I've shown here on the report. Um, one of them is for health-based care providers and personal service providers, one's for, uh, small business startups. One is for, uh, general small business COVID interruption grant, and then the other one is for nonprofit businesses. Um, the program guidelines and the eligible businesses are listed. Um, it's pretty detailed. So we'll go into everything. The general aspect of it is, um, up to a hundred thousand dollars for those businesses if they can demonstrate a twenty-five percent loss in uh, revenue from the period of March through August. So they're comparing the revenue from March through August of nineteen to March through August of twenty. And if they can demonstrate a twenty-five percent loss, at least, then their eligible is for up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that will be pro read, prorata based on the number of applications and the amount of funds available. So they're gonna hand those out. Application period is gonna be from the twelfth through the twenty-third of this month. Everything has to be dispersed by December thirtieth. So really quick turnaround, I've started talking to a couple of businesses about this and putting out the word more here in the next, uh, week. Once we get a final word that this is exactly how it's gonna be. Um, GOED is going to be overseeing the small business, the nonprofit and the startup programs, so we're expecting to work with them fairly closely on this. Um, back to regular report, uh, for the chamber. The last month, we updated the biologs. We are finalizing our October direct mailing. Um, working on our trunk or treat event, which will be on Halloween. Um, instead of having the general, the regular Halloween party, we're working with the Optimist Club on a trunk or treat event that will be at the high school from two to four o'clock. So I think that will be a good old time. Uh, we're expecting the businesses, we're hoping the businesses will decorate their trunks and come in costume and theme and then, um, to address COVID issues, we are going to have people handing out the candy to the kids instead of having the kids dig through a bucket of candy to find what they want, so. And it is outdoors, so we're addressing those issues as much as we can. Um, additionally, continuing to work with marketing committee on some promotional videos. We currently have seven filmed. Uh, we're gonna, going to be deciding a release date for those and releasing those to help promote Hartford businesses. So continuation of our Discover Hartford program. Um, and then we are actively planning our twenty twenty-one annual banquet on the AJD, um, seaside. Again, we have those RFIs. Um, we are the finalist for one GOED application and they will be here the week of October nineteenth for their site visit, so we're hopeful for that. I think we have a pretty good chance, um, given our relations to workforce and infrastructure and transportation, so. We're really excited about that. Uh, and then just continuing to work on workforce housing projects and then, uh, monitoring the status of other opportunities and, uh, planning our annual meeting, which will be Tuesday, November tenth at Buffalo Ridge Brewery. I'll be needing formal invitations to y'all shortly. So, um, yeah, that's the gist of it. Any questions?
How was the conference that you went to?
So they got postponed.
Oh, okay.
Yep, they had a, they had a spike in COVID cases and that's, obviously they are moving it to spring twenty twenty-one.
Alright.
So.
Just curious.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you for being here, yep. Yep, great. Alright, that's an engineer report.
I, John, real quick.
I, I just wanted to follow up from our meeting last, uh, a couple, well, a couple of weeks ago. And I just want you to know that we, uh, internally did some things to help clarify, uh, for communication. Uh, really it ended up being more of a lack of communication. First of all, I didn't have a wall. Really, it ended up being more of a lack of communication, first of all, I didn't have all the information to come to the meeting. And, um, you know, Mitch was out that day due to COVID as well, his family, and so I was filling in for him, just, uh, kind of fill in so that we had, we could give you an update on what we did have. Um, and so internally, we're gonna make sure we have better information when coming to the meeting. But a couple of those items really weren't, um, didn't really, uh, weren't really our issue, but that there again, because I didn't know all those information, those things. So as, as regarding, regarding the sidewalk, we did send a letter to the contractor, um, that, copy of that letter was sent to the city staff. I think in the future, we're gonna be copying you guys, our letters, so you have that information as well. Um, we also taken other steps when we do that warranty inspection, if there's major, major things like that. Uh, we'll be notifying the, the property owners of that, um, so that they're aware that there's some significant work gonna be taking place now. Um, my understanding is there was no sprinklers affected though, I know that was a discussion. And then, um, so that in regard to Mickelson, I think, uh, you know, from our perspective, where I think we're gonna end up just providing you some more correspondence that we've had, and then try to communicate that with those property owners such as yourself.
You know that they washed their truck out in my boulevard, you know?
Yeah, so, no, I don't know that.
Yeah, we did, just saying.
Mitch knows.
Yeah, we got that. That's why Mitch is here.
I'll tell you what, I, it was probably a good thing I was gone.
Yeah.
That would not have been pretty, I'm just out there.
Um, then I wanted to follow up, uh, regarding, uh, Vandemark, I know, uh, Travis, you're on the phone there, you know, that, that was a utility contractor and kind of out of our control as far as the dirt that was being placed in that boulevard, wherever that was. Um, my understanding is that was a utility contractor performing that. Uh, really what we took away from this though, is we had some inconsistencies from the two projects. We had, I'll call it a lot of communication up on Vandemark and not much on Mickelson. So internally, we, we wanna improve on that. So, um, we've, we're, uh, we've scheduled a monthly meeting with the mayor and Teresa and Craig, just to make sure that, you know, they're getting all the same information that is getting passed on to our contractors and things like that, so that they're aware of that as well. So, cause we'd love it if you guys would call us, but you're not calling us, you need to be going through Teresa or Craig. And if you would call us, we'd have some of that information, but, you know, obviously proper chain of command, if you guys go through Teresa and then through us and that, information back to you. So, you know, obviously we're concerned about, you know, um, some of the, the concerns that you had at the last meeting and we wanna correct, we don't want that to be your issue, we don't want that to be an issue. And, um, you know, normally a contractor does call locates, he didn't. And that would, you know, that was already informed, Mitch and Craig had talked about that, you know, you're gonna be notified because you're gonna get a locate. And Craig, if you remember, Craig said the same thing, if you are, you get a locate. Well, and we can't control that either. Um, so there's not a lot of that, that we could have done in that, in that regard. But, um, what would have helped is if we had communicated that to tell you that, hey, we did send that letter out. Contractor is gonna be in there within the next month doing this work. Now, we still, it's one of those things where that kind of work, they're gonna just pop in there and do it, cause they got two, three hours left in the day and got a couple of guys that wanna get busy and keep busy. So that, and that's okay, that, as far as I'm concerned, that's okay, because we wanted to get the work done, we don't want it to fall into next year. So I wanted to just, I could share with you that, uh, I'm gonna let Mitch talk about the details of all these projects. There were some other things on the, on the paving and the rain, you know, our guy did stop them on that and told them to quit, they didn't. And so we've taken action since then, um, so I don't know if you've heard that. Yeah, so our, our guys were there, uh, they did tell them to, you know, quit and they didn't. Um, and so that's all been documented, those, those are in our, our DHLs, I just didn't know that, you know, they're, they're in our communication. So I think I'll let Mitch kind of update you guys on some more of those details in the future, so.
Thanks, John.
And just to touch base on John saying these monthly meetings we're having, um, Mitch is doing notes for me, just sent them out today. So I'll put them in your council's box under the council information, so everybody can read them and know what was discussed and.
Yeah, and then by the extent that we've been removing the whole council there, but, um, I think it'd be good to pass around the invite to say, you know what? My name is Jones, if you guys wanna come this next month, at this time, it's wherever, and we try to work our way through the council and just have people.
We'd love that, I mean, if you guys wanna know some of this information, we'd love to share it with you, but, you know, some of this stuff is, some of the details in the leads that, you know, you probably don't want.
When I get the, we're kind of probably done road projects for.
The year, yeah.
A while, I mean.
Oh, well, you've got, you've got some projects coming up next year.
I still think there's a, there's gotta be a better solution that you guys are notified properly.
Oh, when they show up, yeah, when they don't show up.
We need to hold contractors for more.
Accountable.
Accountable on that, and so that's what I would really like to see. So we don't get in situations where you guys didn't have any opportunity expected.
You're right, and we will bring that, we did talk about that with Teresa and, and Mitch and Craig. And we, we wanna, you know, we'll, we'll bring those options to you at some point. I think we gotta be a little careful to not be different, too different than everyone else that's in the industry. Cause we don't wanna necessarily, um, how should I say it, um, set an unrealistic like damage or a penalty for not doing something that might get challenged, so. We just, but we will bring that to your attention, we'll at some point talk.
Yeah, market, right, where we really struggle most is in, probably the subdivisions with getting those notifications, we've had that in the past year. That's really where we need to try to develop something, that's where I see a, a good use for that. On these road, road projects, I mean, no one would be out there full time, so nobody would need to notify us. But I don't disagree, there wouldn't be a, a good thought to try to investigate.
It's a hammer is what you really want, because these guys aren't listening to us, they're not listening to us.
Even if you told them that too.
Yeah, they take on that risk, we can't jump the front of the paper.
No, that's right.
And, and they are, they know that they're taking on that risk that we, cause we rejected it.
So, yeah.
They're gonna try to convince you not to make them repay it, they're gonna come to you, because we've already rejected it. So it's, as far as we're concerned, it's coming out where we've got a mark, uh, they don't agree with that, and so they're gonna bring that to your attention. And it's very clear in our standards that you can't pay in the rain, so, yeah. So, that's the word.
That's what, if that was a calculated risk.
Right, is what you're trying to say, and it'll hurt, I mean, that's a very expensive thing for them, that they have to live with now, so. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Quick question?
Yep.
Travis? We'll get, we'll get there, I just make sure that when we get to the pay request that I straight, I retire, I just, I'll just.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll.
We'll just have a review of your question.
Yep.
Uh, we'll just, just build on what John said, you know, I was gone at the last meeting, but I, I apologize for that notification. John's effect, you know, we, we kind of get known to these warranty inspections, we were doing them often enough and usually just a panel to, that we didn't opt out. But no after seeing how much sidewalk was marked out there. I can see why people weren't wondering what was going on, and so that fell on me, so I apologize for that. Um, I came back the next day, I already visited with you and you got some swag laid out in there.
Keep that on a down low. I used, I used my back surgery card, I went.
So, I, we're, we're.
Hey, 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 hang on a minute. I can't buy a piece of property, but you got the city engineer to have to pay for it, Travis.
I missed that one and I just, I'll make it up, you know, we'll be better.
Well, one point on that, when the guy told me, oh, we located this two years ago, oh, I'll tell you what, I was this close to calling in and turning them in. I probably should have, I probably should have, had I known they were gonna dump their concrete truck on the boulevard, I probably would have called them in.
Yeah, is that what you had Mitch clean it up?
Nope, no, nope.
Something else?
It was just nothing.
First of nine street, just, uh, just so you guys know, we sent the letters in your packet, and I'm just gonna start including all our cor, major correspondence like that right in our packet. I think that's punch lists and those things. And if, if you guys, you know, need more detail, you know, feel, feel free to call. You know, that, that is one thing I tell everybody, is if you really wanna know what's going on, you know, just call us when we can get you updated. Um, but at this stage, we rejected the asphalt and it's, uh, you know, it's not the entire top lift, it's the last portion that was, was couple days in the rain. Um, it's about a hundred and twenty-five tons, it will be estimated. So we're withholding that on this payout, we're not paying that out until we get this addressed and to, to your guys' satisfaction and our satisfaction.
Um, you're holding that on top of the 10%?
Yep, that's on top of the 10%. So we had twenty-six thousand dollars in retainage, cause we wanna make sure that we're retaining enough that if you have to have someone else come in and do it, they've got, that's, other person has to build off and do that work a bit too. So we'll make sure that we retain enough for that as well.
89, appears to be three hundred and forty square yards over estimate, to the tune of about twenty-eight thousand dollars, what's that for?
Which item is that, Travis?
Eighty-nine.
Uh, that's the fillip sections, so we did have, I know we have an overrun on quantity on that, but we also had, if you remember, there was a, a number of approaches there that had steel in them. And so I know that got paid out through that item, cause they, those, those had steel in them, so it was a like quantity. Um, I'm sure that's what that has to do with.
I remember that part of it being discussed here, when you took out.
Yeah.
When we took out that reinforced piece in the back of Beaver built and some of that.
Beaver builds is all reinforced, they had two approaches there, and even the apartment's approach was reinforced.
Was reinforced as well.
Yeah. So we can sure, you know, separate that out, I guess, on, on the payout, so you can see that. But that's what that's, it's, as we do it.
So do we have enough retainage to cover this?
Yep. For the asphalt repairs, yes. Um, the contract does say, you know, anything that's acceptable gets paid out as it's accepted, you know, if one isn't acceptable, say we're obligated to pay them those items. Uh, one item we are, you know, watching too, is the seeding out there. And I'll just, we were taking a different approach on this job into the Vandemark. Um, we've talked in the past about seed windows with these contractors, we specify for them to seed within certain seed windows. Uh, there's one in the fall, one in the spring, and they seeded this ninth street just outside of this fall, spring, uh, seed windows. So that seed window will close that September fifteenth, and they seed it about a week after that. Um, until we can get that seed established, we're gonna withhold payment on that as well, um, just to ensure that, that it gets established.
That was a matter we discussed here, just, well, just the other day. Um, that, that's a, been a pretty common thing, you guys have noticed that, that they're missing those seed windows like crazy, so I know you guys have put up other.
And so what we've also done is we've actually reached out to another seeding contractor that we worked on private sites. And so we have someone at the ready in the spring. If, if, in best case scenario, what they seed out there takes and we don't have an issue, they don't close the contract. But if it doesn't take, we wanna be able to have someone come in the spring and do that work if our contractor is not getting to it. So we've already wired someone up to help us with that, um, so if they don't act within that seed window, we have someone that can come in and, and do that. Any other questions?
You know that pavement deal, it's only two days of rain that's covered.
I know, I know.
Right, I think that is the only two days of rain that's covered. It's just crazy.
So, I, I, you want me to go through the report and then we can come back to payouts?
That'd be perfect.
Uh, root lane intersection, that project's pretty much done out there, you know, when I was here last time, we talked about possibly needing to spend more money on, um, asphalt repairs. We milled the top lift off, uh, Craig and I looked at it together, we really didn't see any sign of any, uh, foundation or deficiency in that bottom lift. It looked like it held, it was really just in that top lift, we were worried it might reflect through, um, but that bottom lift really looked to be in good condition. Uh, so we avoided that extra expense that I was kind of worrying about. Um, they repaved it, uh, things turned out pretty good out there. We did have some overruns on the foundation material that goes on it as a storm sewer, we asked them to put more foundation material on the payout by the time, just because it was pretty wet in that intersection, surprisingly wet. Uh, we also had a little bit overrun on the asphalt overlay, you know, and that happens on overlays just because it's hard to get exactly two inches in those areas, the milling machine, you know, is a little bit variable that way. Uh, so we do have a little bit of an overrun on that contract, I wanna say we're hedging about seven thousand dollars over right now. So not a big overrun. Um, there's a punch list that was included in your packet, we, we haven't done an inspection on ninth street, you have a way for Craig to come back, so you can walk through it with us. Um, we'll follow up the punch list for that project as well, but you have the root lane punch list there, nothing major on there, those are pretty standard, standard items. Any questions? The rest of the report, we've kind of hit on Mickelson warranty, as far as the warranty goes on Mickelson, they have the sidewalks, and they do still have some more work east of Shamrock, they've got some curb repairs there. Um, so they're gonna be making cones at some point here, um, but I really don't think there's gonna be a big impact anybody down there, a little bit impacting the traffic, most of cones out there. But with that, we should be wrapping those up, we talked about last time I was here too, the, the box culvert, you can feel a hump as you go over, it's settling on each side of it a little bit. We're gonna have them come back next spring and mill that down and put that back and wanna get one more free cycle out of that. And then that way it's milled and put back, and then Craig can come along with us and reseal that later in that year, so as long as we're ready for this project, we should be okay. So we've noted that on there, punch list, and they're well, they're aware of that.
They've done some of the curb.
I was going with.
Yeah, and settling on that big, that big culvert too, that's.
Covering, yeah, that's covering, that, that box culvert is so rigid, you know, there's really only two feet of gravel still on top of it, so it's compressed and everything abut, abutting is dirt that needs compaction, and it's always gonna have a little bit of settlement. But we have a two, we have a two-year warranty on settlements, so that's why we noted it now and asked them to wait another year, get that a two-year deflection out of it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, other than that, we just have the pay requests that are on the agenda. We have one, first one doing for ninth street, and again, some progress payment with retainage and withholding on the asphalt top lift, withholding on the seeding. Um, we're recommending that we pay the contractor two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, seven dollars and seventeen cents.
Make the most to approve pay request for two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven dollars and seventeen cents.
All right, discussion? All right, we'll vote, I, Jones?
Yes.
Brennall?
Yes.
Keenan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Man, right now.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a payout for root and old hole to Zacharias again. Here, they had reached substantial completion, so that retainage goes down to five percent as part of their contract. Um, what we're recommending payment at this time of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Make the most to approve pay request for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four and fifty-two cents.
Second. All right, discussion? I know? Arnold?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brennan?
Yes.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right. That's great.
Thank you.
Yep, we appreciate all the clarification and follow-up, follow all that, but uh.
That's great.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. All right, Craig's not here tonight, or couldn't be here tonight, so we've got his, his report in our packet. Any discussion or questions on that?
Just a couple things, I wanted to point out, you also see in the packet Craig has put in a couple of speed reports, and those were, you know, we were getting complaints down there on East Opal, you know, basically from Crestman Opal. So we put the speed trailers out there, um, facing them both directions, so that's the two different reports. Um, you notice that the average speed is right around those twenty miles per hour, which is surprising with all the reports we got. I mean, the top speed, as you know, they're pretty high too, but I mean, that could be one or two people, and we don't know, but the majority of them going through there are doing the speed limit, so, um, I was able to give these copies to the resident down there, and that made him feel a little bit better, it said, well, this is, made him think it wasn't quite as bad as what he thinks, but I, I, I won't argue there's somebody going through there speeding when you see seventy-three miles an hour, obviously, somebody's in those two blocks, so, I don't know. He did ask if this council would consider, and we can talk about this more when Craig comes back, if you feel more comfortable, but he said, um, he would though, he said the only thing more he would ask is if we could put a speed limit sign, so like when you turn off a Crestman trail onto Opal going east, there's not a speed limit sign, there's one on the block before off of Western. Um, and if we would consider putting a sign in there that says like, no through traffic, so people aren't going in there that, you know, aren't residents in there that, you know, thinking it's a through road. I said, you know, I, I would throw that out there to you guys, let you think about it, like I said, we can talk more when Craig comes back, or if you just want Craig to talk about or think about it, I mean, that's, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that, or if you just link up to public works, but.
I would, I would really don't want Craig's opinion or whether I can consider, um, I do have your Chris's.
Yeah, so, well, we'll just kind of talk about that at the next meeting, then when Craig's back here and whatnot, and he did bring up some issues too about parking too close to the intersection of Crestman and Opal, and I said, that's easy enough to fix, we can just paint some yellow lines on there, so we'll just handle that, so, on there, so, I just wanted to kind of point that out for you guys, so.
When is he back? Is he back?
He'll be back Thursday, not tomorrow, but Thursday.
I had a request from our church, Bonnie, they're hold, holding Bonnie Lewin's funeral at the park, I think they requested the, um, shelter.
Yeah.
Uh, they sent me a text today and they asked if we could block off like eight parking spots.
Yeah, I had that in my report, they called here and asked me about it, so I was gonna bring that, so we can talk about it now, but they had asked if, yeah, Bonnie Lewin's funeral is gonna be in the park and, um, have the amphitheater and of course, most of the park. Um, they had asked, basically what they told me, Second Street, basically from Van de Mark to Kelly, to kind of block that off for additional parking. Um, they almost told me like one-thirty to three o'clock.
Right.
Right there, so it's an hour and a half, and I, you know, obviously this just came up, I said, I'll just see if the council has any issue with that. I mean, we definitely can throw some barricades out there if nobody has any problems with it, so.
I'm sure, I mean, they're anticipating, since they're out there outside, they're anticipating a big crowd, so.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so if everybody, does anybody have any problem with that, then we'll just, we'll just tell the guys where to block it off then, okay?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know for sure where to break down.
No, no, that's fine, no.
Second to what, Theresa?
Um, so Second Street, Van de Mark to Kelly, so basically just a, a block in there.
Oh, south. Or no.
No, they want Second Street blocked between Van de Mark and Kelly.
So we just park cars in there.
So that, so basically they'll just be on the south, blocking off the south side of the park, yeah. The street right to the south there.
Kelly's the street on the east side of the park, right?
Kelly goes north and south.
Yeah, but it's on the east side of the park.
Kelly goes north, south, and west.
Well, it does, yeah, I did, it was a young, it was a young, it goes around the south part.
Kelly's going towards its goal to the east.
Right, right.
I make the big one, the bigger thing.
I was confused there for a while.
The bigger thing.
You're right, yeah, you're right, Kelly does.
If we can get everybody out of there before school gets out.
Right, and that's the thing too, or, so if we can.
That's, that's the thing we're gonna have to kind of keep an eye on.
Right, I'd say, if it's only till three o'clock, it'd probably be okay, cause then, you know.
Yeah, well, and the only reason I ask is, cause instead of the Jersey barriers, full water, maybe they can just use orange cones. So if somebody had to come or go, you know, it's just a matter of picking up.
Well, that could be easy enough, we got them, or just those foldable barric, I mean, that you can just.
I'm anticipating we're gonna have some less guys from church, we'll be down there, kind of directing traffic a little bit.
Okay, so that would be good.
Yep. So, anyway, thanks, Theresa.
Who for council's willing?
I don't know, you do? I'm gonna be there.
All right. All right, anything else on Craig's report? Okay. Karen, Fire Department Officer report?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to my report. Um, I do have one action item, the audit. Auditors have completed our report, they've sent a copy to the state. Um, Theresa and I have both looked it over, all looks okay, so I would just need a motion to approve that.
Make motion to approve the audit.
Second. Discussion? We'll vote. Brennan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
And O'Hara?
Yes.
And Keel?
I need your motion.
Our motion is to approve the two thousand and eighteen audit report.
Approved.
All right. All right, now move to Theresa's.
Okay, um, so we got the new phone system up and going, hopefully got most of the kinks out of it. Um, with it, every employee, um, like me, Karen, Craig, we have direct lines now too, so I put those phone numbers in the computer box for you as well, that's under council information. So if you wanna know what our direct phone number is, if you just wanna talk to us directly, so that's in there for your information. Um, our Qs, I sent out email and put in here, but basically we got nine, which is a good number, that, um, so it was a, a good interest in that, uh, returned to us. The committee will be reviewing these, the, these, we'll be reviewing them these next two weeks, and then the week of October nineteenth, we're gonna try to set up a meeting to kind of all meet together and, and go compare our notes, and um, I'm thinking come up with the top, you know, two or three, or whatever it is that we, you know, wanna look at further and probably do like an interview process with them, so. Um, like I said, I'm hoping through this month, maybe we can get that completed. Um, insurance quotes, I did look into, um, what our current insurance is, and we have to give them, uh, uh, a notice for cancellation IDAs, and we can pass that already, so um, we're stuck into another year with the insurance, but I did make a note that we'll look at this next summer, we'll look at it earlier, so we can actually get out there and look at other quotes and, and get that for next year going. Um, I don't have this on my, um, report, but I, I was thinking about it when I was typing it, I just didn't get a chance to look at the numbers, but I just wanna let you know, building permits, we're, we're doing pretty good this year, considering COVID and everything else that's going on. Number permits, last year we had a hundred and four, and to date this year, we have a hundred and thirty-one, so we're almost three higher than that. Single-family homes, last year we had fifteen, this year we got twenty-eight already, so we're almost doubling, and I think I know two more that are coming in, so we would've doubled them, so it, it was a good year for building permits for us so far, so, that's encouraging, that, um, that'll help our, our growth rate with our meal living when we figure that, that brings that number up, so we always wanna see those building permit numbers go up, so. Um, a couple other items that weren't on my report that just came up this week, um, I had a call yesterday from Jill Gabbard. Um, she is working with a group of kids, uh, basically it's the West Central Athletes. They are doing some community service projects, and they did this actually last year, where they go and they will rake and clean up the yards of the elderly, or if you're disabled or whatnot, and, and this they had, what she, I can't remember the number she said they had last year, but they have, you know, almost twice as many kids signed up this year, they got about a hundred and fifty kids signed up this year to do those projects. They plan to do it in, um, on Friday, October thirtieth. She's wondering if we can open the dump site, you know, so, they have a place to go with all this material from these yards, and I didn't see any problem, but I just wanted to make sure council's okay, we're probably I mean, I don't see where we have to have probably rums sit out there, we will just, they just wanted to open up in, um, the afternoon, they're gonna start like at four-thirty and, and probably, you know, open it till dark, you know, and just a couple hours in there, so we'll just probably open the gate and then come back and close it, so, is everybody okay with that? Okay?
No problem.
No, good sir, okay, I'll tell her that's okay. And the last thing, um, that came up, Matt Evans contacted me, the, um, sports complex committee. Um, Tom had drafted, you know, we had talked, they had talked about advertising out of the sports complex, about, you know, selling places for banners and advertising on the fences and on the buildings or whatnot, and, um, we instructed Tom to, um, draft an agreement that, you know, they had presented a dollar amount, you know, for, he had put together an agreement, they looked it over, they think it all looks okay with them. They just want some clarification on who can do the advertising on there, I guess there was some discussion at the last meeting. Are we gonna allow like the brewery to advertise, or South Bar to advertise? Do, do we allow businesses like that, or because they sell liquor, do we not? I mean, is that, what are we gonna allow out of the sports complex? Um, do we have any issues, I guess, that was the biggest thing about establishments that sell liquor.
It's slippery slope.
Yeah, yeah.
And I got a desire to get down that slope. This goes way back to our first discussions on this deal.
Well, you would probably know.
Yeah, we talked about this when we had the first meetings on this advertising deal. Are we gonna allow, we just threw out the example, are we gonna allow blood watchers to put a sign out there? I mean, that's. They got the money.
So, um, like I said, it's not on the agenda, I said, well, they won't be making, but maybe think about that, I'll throw it on to the next agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll tell them we're gonna talk about it, and maybe could think about, maybe they can be here to kind of cover their discussion, so. Okay, that is all I have right now. Any questions?
Yeah. Yeah, that's slippery slope, we talked about that just now, but, maybe if there's like a lease agreement, like we have, like we have a lease agreement, sponsorship agreement, where it's worded that we can approve or deny for a reason.
Yeah, I know, that's what we're gonna talk about.
Theresa, do you know right off the top of your head what the verbiage is on the billboard lease agreement? Cause the billboard lease agreement's gotta address that same subject in some manner, doesn't it?
It just says that the vinyl needs to be approved by the city of Minnesota.
That always says, it doesn't say anything about.
About, it can't be a, you know, can't, it doesn't say anything about like no alcohol, or no you know, cigarettes, or I mean, doesn't have anything that says it, it just says it needs to be approved basically by the city. Yeah, they need to present a copy of what they're gonna put out there, and I review them, and.
Yeah. Just like, I don't worry about the business that's currently in town, I'm thinking more about what could be here someday, and what that could turn into sometime.
Tom, are there any legal? Tom, are there any legal implications of us denying somebody the opportunity to advertise something?
I think as long as you've got reasonable basis for what the determination is, a sexually oriented business, for example. Uh, I assume that's one of them that would be of concern.
Yeah.
Um, so that, I mean, as long as there's a rational basis behind that, um, if I do some protection, it just can't be something arbitrary.
The agreement that Tom proposed to, kind of mirrors our billboard, I have it here. Um, it basically just says, you know, the owner reserves the right to reject, you know, if they, they find the content, you know, inappropriate, you know, and so that's gonna have to kind of be left out.
Let's review this.
But, but, but the committee is wondering on their end, do they even approach like the South Bar, or, or, you know, they're wondering.
Yeah, we need to give them some direction.
Right, they just want some direction, you know, who just kind of approach.
Table and tell them next. Well, I, I mean, I think everybody needs to chew on it, and tell the next meeting.
Yeah, and yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, that you guys start thinking about, and we'll talk about.
Well, after, after you just said that, Theresa, though, if, you know, you could just, you could just open the gate to whatever and whoever, as long as it's written in there that you know, the, the sign holder or the leasing has the, has the right to end the lease. You know, if, if there is a problem, if there is, if something is deemed to be inappropriate. And I would think if you had thirty people down there telling you to get, you need to take that sign down, I think you could deem that inappropriate, and then just end the lease, take sign. You know, and, and then worry about what happens, instead of trying to figure out every scenario before it happens, so.
Yeah, that's how I view it.
Cause people are thinking about me, and I'm thinking about people that name their business. Well. With all kinds of weird puns, that you wouldn't necessarily wanna impress a young person to read on billboard. I give examples, but they're not appropriate.
All right, any questions for Theresa on her report? All right, let's go to old business, are we doing the plaque? Track one and track two are in suspension.
We have now got a signed pre-organization agreement, they signed it and brought that in, so, um, the plaque conforms to our regulations, and they have signed that agreement, so.
I make a motion to approve the plaque. Second.
Discussion? All right, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brennan?
Yeah.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right. C-CAG agreement on their new business, and we can, is there still pieces we have to put on there, or is that just withdrawn at this point?
It is withdrawn, so I called C-CAG, Leslie was C-CAG today, I want some more clarification on what that forty-one hundred dollar charge would be, or what they would all do for it. And basically, like I put in my report, you know, usually if we get grants or loans through the state, administering them, you know, doing all the reports and follow-up, and you know, keeping track of the contractors ours and stuff, C-CAG does that because the state pays them to do that. Now, this is a FEMA grant, so it's a federal grant, they don't do that, and usually, like I said, with, um, larger projects, they build that fee just right into the grant application, and they did that with our storm shelter that we applied FEMA. But this was such a small project, I mean, it's find generator and installing it. Um, she didn't do that, and so normally they charge, um, basically it's a, whatever that dollar amount grant, it's five percent, and that's where that forty-one hundred come from, cause it was an eighty-two thousand, um, grant total. Um, so I asked her what was involved with it, I, how many reports, is this something I can do, you know, or is it more detailed? She says, it's very, very minimal stuff, and that, um, basically it just ended up, she says, they're gonna do it for free, so, we can withdraw it and let them do so. We're glad C-CAG.
Free's good.
Free is always good, so, they're gonna do it and not charge us.
We're gonna pull right past that?
Yeah.
Well, they'll get it on the back on somewhere.
Not your front, somewhere.
Well, we, everybody does. Everybody does, right? Yeah, yeah, everybody, yeah.
All right, job description for part-time seller room, well.
Make motion to approve.
A second. Discussion? Ryan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brennan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And Keel?
Yes.
We haven't already wrote in the ordinance precedent, you or Craig can hire a tenant.
Right, with part-time, yeah, so.
I know, you can come to council.
Nope, we just want you, you know, let the job description, if you're good with it, and, and, um, we'll start advertising, you know, get some money, hopefully some, one or two people hire.
All right, next item, do we have suggestions for a rescheduled date for the November third council meeting?
It'd be easier for us to be here the night after rather than the night before.
It'd be easier for us to be here the night after rather than the night before. They can have everything set up.
They will probably have stuff set up at night before because they usually come back.
And we should have it on Wednesday. That's what I was thinking, I guess.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. Cause.
I'll second Arden's motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have it on the third or the Wednesday, whatever that is, fourth.
Before.
Second, Wednesday the fourth.
Mark already said, and you can second it. We can have a couple seconds.
Oh, third, oh, third, if you want to.
We got a second and a third.
All right, we'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right, last thing on the normal agenda. We've got a training agreement appointment on Michelle Kilbord, who I recommended from, from Planning Zoning actually. Some of the members have reached out. She, um, she's been a resident of her for, for a while now. Lives up on night. Spreads out our, kind of our representation on Planning Zoning. I've talked to her a little bit on this weekend and then met her actually at the, at the bingo at the brewery. Um, she's president of the PTA. Pat Rabby, Rabby was her mother, who spent some time on city council. This would be, be a short-term appointment. She's been, she knows that as well because it's covering barman's term, which ends here basically at the end of the year. So she's going to feel it out and see how that goes and we'll see how things go.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Michelle Kilbord to planning.
Second.
Discussion? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yep.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right. Nothing for correspondence. We have a new motion for executive session for legal.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for legal.
Second.
We'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And Keel?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome.
Oh, sure. I'm sure that anxious in the way you want to come on the stockboat to do.
I'll make a motion to authorize stockboat to do surveying on.
Property, property.
Second.
Session? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Opposed.
Opposed. Noted?
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to return.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.